Next, next item is distinguished school.
So Title One distinguished school, I'd like the three executive directors of student achievement to come up. We're going to first mention, and it's been out there publicly, but we had four of the final eight that were nominated in the state of Michigan for a distinguished award. And I would like to ask, from Salina Intermediate, I believe Principal Loera is here. From McDonald, Principal Modica. And from Stout, Principal Oak. We're going to start with those three. They were finalists, so they were the finalists of the eight. Yeah, come on up, please. And we have a certificate that we just want to give. And if we can just kind of, I'll present that to them, and if we can congratulate them. And then next, we did have one of the two that were officially recognized at the national level by the federal government. And so I'm going to have Ms. Farage come up to introduce the principal of Maples Elementary.
Thank you. I'd like us to say a few words. So when Dr. Malako said, when we have positive things going on, we all celebrate, we truly do. This is another highlight of the great things happening in our school as we continue to celebrate the district achievements. It's with great honor that I introduce Ms. Chakubek, Maples' principal and teachers, to be recognized by the board tonight for receiving the national, it's called ESEA, distinguished school award for this year. Before I turn it to them, I'd like to make a few comments. ESEA stands for Elementary and Secondary Education Act, and formerly known as Title One. I wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate Maple staff and parents as they have proven several times, and now once more, that they put students first. Socioeconomic and language barriers, or language proficiency, are not barriers to achievement and growth, as we all hear often in the research. For the past eight years, Maples has beaten the odds and outperformed schools with similar demographics. Maples has received several awards. To name a few, reward school recognition from MDE for three consecutive years, from 2014 to 20, 2012 to 2014. Beating the odds despite high needs when compared to demographically similar, similar schools, also from MDE. The school was also named a champion school and received two A grades from the Bridge Magazine. And all of these were for narrowing the achievement gap between subgroups. This year, Maples receives the National Elementary and Secondary Education Act distinguished school. Just a clarification that this award is not from MDE. It is submitted by MDE on behalf of the schools to the national organization, which is the ESEA. Again, ESEA awards schools based on one of three categories. Maples category three, which is excellence in serving special population of students, homeless, migrant, and other subgroups. The other two categories are high achievement and closing the achievement gap. I would say, and without any hesitation, that programs that were instituted at Maples are second to none, like we've heard that term before. And I'm delighted to see that these are sustainable by the current principal and staff. And this is, this and previous awards are the result of consistent and sustainable initiatives implemented by the staff. So thank you again, and I'd like to introduce Maple's staff.
So I think we're going to get a group picture for David. We'll just get everybody.
I want to take a minute to introduce the teachers that I brought with me. Is this going to go up?
Yes.
I'm going to speak on it as it goes? No?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. The last, or two weeks ago, we were fortunate enough to attend the conference in Kansas City. And so the staff that attended with me, that I've brought today. Darlene Hamel is the instructional coach. She has been at Maples two and a half years. Rola Jabber is an ELD. She has been an instructional educator at Maples for 28 years, longer than any of us. Yay. Sanya Zane is an ELD. She, this is her second year. Natasha Sajra is the assistant principal. She joined the Maples staff when I did, two and a half years ago. And Rana Alcadre, she is also an ELD, and she joined us last year. Pictured on the screen, we are shown with Fred Williams from MDE. So he was, he celebrated and joined with us, and we had a dinner that they hosted for all the, the schools that were chosen. As Fatmi said, I am very fortunate to have been chosen to lead Maples and work to continue the high achievement that she built as the foundation with her staff over the years. This slide shows what it means to be a national Title One distinguished school. As Fatmi mentioned, there are three categories. First is for exceptional student performance for two consecutive years. The second is closing the achievement gap between student groups. And the third is excellence in serving special populations of students. Fred informed us that Dearborn, as we said, had four nominations. Congratulations again to McDonald, and Stout, and Salina Secondary or Intermediate School. And Maples was actually chosen, and was actually the top nominated school in two of the categories. We were chosen for category two and category three, but no school, the committee's not allowed to choose two schools from the same district. So Maples was chosen for category two, and Hiller Elementary in Madison Heights, which is part of the Lampier District, was chosen for category three. And they were chosen for their work with their English learners, as well as we are in Dearborn. So at the conference, there were 68 schools representing the states across the United States. Each state chooses two, and they're allowed to not, they're allowed to submit a proposal. So we submitted a proposal, and Maples was, was the school that was honored and chosen to be, to sent. During the last three years, we have hired 13 new teachers at Maples, classroom teachers. So that is approximately half of our classroom staff is new over the last three years. In addition, we've had a renewed focus on Dr. Malako's goal of working in collaborative teams. With that large of a population of new staff, that had to be our focus first, is acclimating, acclimating the new staff to Dearborn and to Maples as well. In addition, with Rose's support, and the restructuring of the role of the ELDs, last year, we had, these three ladies were new to the role. So we've had lots of support from Rose and her office to be able to train those, these three classroom teachers, to be able to support the English learners and the teachers by co-teaching in the classrooms. Over the last two years, we, as a staff, have created a number of new programs. We have begun a new focus on social emotional learning. More and more of our students are coming with challenges and difficulties, so we have begun some things in the classroom. We are doing more work with restorative practices. We are highlighting and expanding on the core values. So the core values have always been part of Dearborn. And last year, we made sure that our students had a very good understanding of each of these core values. This year, we extended it and went into the habits of mind. So each month, we highlight a different habit. Shown is, one of them is listening with empathy and understanding. So we use these, we show video clips, we read stories to the students, and then we find opportunities to acknowledge their positive behavior when they are emulating that. Shown here are brag tags. So the students have an opportunity to receive brag tags. And it's something that, once a week, they wear them around their neck, and even into the fifth grade, it is a really big deal. And they really enjoy this, and it's an opportunity for us to highlight and celebrate their recognition as well. We've also done things as far as the lunch champions, acknowledging the students that are achieving high levels on our standardized tests. Couple weeks ago, a student found money, well, he lost money, and he was very upset. This is Ali Salimi. He was very upset, he was crying, he didn't have any money, that he lost it for, I think his field trip. So the secretary opened her wallet, handed him $3, and said, "It's okay, don't cry, here's your money." Well, the next day, he came back, and he said, "The money was in the car, I had left it on the seat, so Ms. Salameh, I want to," or not Ms. Salameh, Ms., or Shane, "I want to give you back your money." So those kind of opportunities, we take a moment to really share amongst the students, amongst the parents, on social media, just to promote those positives. And that is our focus, as we're building positive citizens through our social emotional learning. This is our staff. Unfortunately, Rose's back didn't cooperate, so she wasn't able to travel with us. Shannon Peterson, executive director, who oversees the English learners, she also joined us. In the picture on the other side are the staff from Hiller Elementary as well. In addition here, we have a couple of the new programs that we have started. We have a new robotics team. We have the Arabic drummers, which was started under Kathy Prowse. And fortunately, her student teacher, Liz Myers, was able to carry that on. So our drummers go all over the city and perform. We have a running club. We have a girls' STEM club that started this year with a focus on, I'm trying to remember the focus on, coding, excuse me, focus on coding. So they're a STEM club and also for coding. And we also have been fortunate to use our title funds for playworks. And this is a program that's also established our social emotional learning with the students. And we are seeing great gains with that as well. Finally, earlier this year, with some of the other schools, Salina, and River Oaks, and one other, Gear Park, thank you, we were able to bring Dave Burgess from Teach Like a Pirate, that was also part of our Title One budget. So we were able to bring that as a staff and have a great day of PD. So we're very honored to continue the strong traditions of achievement with the foundations that were laid by Fatmi Farage and the staff that was in the past and currently, and we're very proud to, to continue that, and look forward to putting students first and seeing more success in the years. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I just want to comment on, first of all, congratulations to Maple Schools. It's so refreshing, and it means something when we say, you know, strong trees have strong, even stronger roots as well. And that's something that you see in Maples. It was really sweet to hear you, Fatmi, do that introduction, because it really gave history as to commitment of success. This type of success does not happen, you know, in a day or in a year.
It's built.
It's built. It's built throughout the years. And to see the past and the present, and to just have this refreshing kind of sense of comfort knowing where the future is going because of this legacy of commitment to this school, that's truly why I believe the school has been so successful. So congratulations to everyone, very well deserved.
Absolutely.
So now we have acknowledgement of donations.
Ms. Farage is going to come up for that.
The first one, a donation of $2,000 has been offered to Howard Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a projector and a whiteboard. A donation of $2,045 has been offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for 250 dictionaries and thesauruses. A donation of $3,500 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for two kilns. A donation of $2,000 has been offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for robotics. A donation of $1,500 has been offered to Nolan Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for second step. A donation of $937 has been offered to Axel Ford High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a flying track for future productions. A donation of $5,000 has been offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a CNC router. A donation of $395 has been offered to Gear Park Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a music stand rack. A donation of $25,000 has been offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a next generation learning NGL. A donation for, of $500 has been offered to the art department by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for the students to create masks for Mardi Gras. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for actions, who are signed in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board president reserve the right to limit time. We do have blue cards, all of which are non-agenda items. And the first blue card we have is from Mr. Scott Solkowski, and he wishes to speak about the 2018 varsity volleyball season at Dearborn High.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Scott Solkowski. I was hoping that the 2018 Dearborn High varsity volleyball season would have stayed in the past forever. But a few weeks ago, I had heard that some parents were coming before the school board to garner support for the recently removed coach. That's when I decided to tell my daughter's story. At the end of the 2017 season, my daughter was named captain by the coaches, and also received the Attitude is Everything Award, which was created for her due to her team spirit and positive attitude. As the season began with a new coach, she was excited and was looking forward to being a bigger part of the team on and off the court. But by the end of the season, she had become depressed and distant. She didn't want to go to practice, didn't want to go to school. One teacher even questioned why she had stopped participating in class. This season had become one of the worst experiences of her life, her words. How could such a dramatic change have happened? She had played 90% of the time. What could have caused her to lose all hope on such a promising season? Was it when two girls had continuously commented on how disgusting she was because of how much she sweat, telling other teammates not to touch things that she had? Was it when in between two practices, one of those same teammates ordered subs for the team to refuel? She was last getting to hers since she was helping with some of the younger players. The sub that was left for her was just two pieces of bread, nothing on it. Maybe it was when those same two girls in the earlier incident said that they had a problem with her, and the coach ordered a meeting. But this meeting didn't involve parents, didn't involve a one-on-one discussion, it consisted of both girls and her, two on one. My daughter felt ambushed and ended up apologizing for a misunderstanding to avoid any future problems. Maybe it was weeks later when she was running around collecting volleyballs during a serving drill and got nailed in the head, only to turn around and see those same two girls high-fiving one another. Finally, could it have been during a timeout in the district final? My daughter said, "We have to stop yelling on the floor, it's not working," only to have the coach say the girl was yelling, the girl that was yelling was only trying to help the team. I think it's pretty obvious, it wasn't one incident. It was a season-long nightmare of bullying, favoritism, no accountability, and not dealing with any of the issues early on, hoping that they would go away. My wife had called, texted, and spoke personally with the coach on several occasions, telling her about some of the things going on. The coach responded by saying she would handle it and not to worry. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. The losses mounted, and the team got worse as the season went on. By the end of the season, the team was so divided that they stretched in warmups to do two different counts, six on one count, six on another. I have three kids that have participated in a variety of sports spanning a decade. I have never heard of anything remotely this toxic. The blame for that lies squarely on the coach's shoulders. Mr. Barry, I played with your brother for four years at Fortson High School, football and basketball. We had some great wins, we had some tough losses. But what do I remember and cherish from those years? The experience, not just with him, but with everyone I played with. The competition, the bus rides, the grueling practices, the electricity of the games. But most importantly, I cherish my teammates. I wasn't best friends with every single one, but there was always a mutual respect between us. I didn't want to revisit this. I don't get pleasure from someone being removed from their position. But I couldn't say, stay silent and let this happen again, whether it be my daughter or someone else's in the future. Her removal was the correct decision. Thank you.
Next blue card, we have from Mr. and Mrs. Sam and Nada Salameh, about the DHS volleyball season.
I'm Nada Salameh. My husband, Sam Salameh. So we stand before you for the same reasons that Scott just spoke about. We had sort of a similar experience, and I know that we don't want to sort of bring to the spotlight and say any names, and we actually welcome our privacy in these matters, and wanted to not stand before you guys and sort of relive the incidents that occurred with our daughter. I've written many letters to the administration, we've written many letters to the coach, we've been in contact with the coach throughout the season as well. Our daughter had very similar experiences as what Scott just described. And actually, I'm here standing before you to thank you guys, because you did your due diligence, the administration, the school board. You reviewed all the facts, you gathered all the facts, you maintained and you kept our privacy, which is what we value the most, and you did not disclose our, our names or our daughter's name in this incident as well. And I want to thank you guys for doing your due diligence to resolve this matter. And as Scott mentioned, it's unfortunate that, and I don't know what they're going to use this platform to talk about today, but we just want to make sure that the facts are out there and they still exist, and we'd be happy to share with anybody any information that they need to support this. But again, I just, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Lee Best about the recent changes in coaching volleyball at DHS.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm just going to read this letter that was written during the season by my wife and was sent in, so I'm going to have to edit it a little bit for content, so as we go along. To whom it may concern, I would like to express our support for the coach, previous coach at DHS. Coach entered the season after assisting the previous coach for several seasons. She entered her first season as head coach this year with a few challenges, a new tougher league and a young team. She also had the challenge of getting out of the previous coach's shadow. This is no tough task, knowing who that coach was. Our daughter has played many varsity sports. She's been involved in athletics since she was in preschool. We've experienced many different coaching styles as her parents. Coach came into the season with a clear expectation for the girls, and was open to trying new things to achieve success. Coach went above and beyond to support the girls both on and off the court. She was fair and approachable, but also had high expectations. Our daughter had a tough junior year, and came into the season with her confidence bruised. Coach not only made it a priority to connect with her, but she really rebuilt her confidence. Our daughter really grew as a player and a leader under coach's watch. By the end of the season, our daughter was an important part of the team, and it showed. She was given the most improved award at the end of the season, after almost giving up on volleyball after her junior year. I attribute that to the approach the coach had with her. She expected a lot from her and guided her through drills and one-on-one training. She also built her up when she was low. It really touched us to see this as a parent. Coach is the type of role model that you would choose for your child. Our daughter now has an exciting opportunity to play college volleyball at Albion. I attribute that to the support of her coaches. She would not have had the confidence to pursue playing after high school without the care she received this fall. There were some challenging and upsetting situations this season. I'm a firm believer in peers working out their disagreements, especially at the high school level. We empower our children to talk through problems directly with the person they disagree with, and if that is not successful or safe, bringing it to an adult. The coaches have given the girls opportunities to work out their differences as a team, and have listened when there were problems. My daughter did not share a lot of what the problems were during the season, because she felt like they were dealt with and resolved. We were witness to a situation with a parent at an away game. We felt it was completely unacceptable and the wrong way to work out a problem. Through all of this, coach treated all the girls with respect and handled herself professionally. I don't know how I would have handled that situation. It was the most dramatic parent situation I've ever witnessed. What I'm the most disappointed about is that there was not a poll of the whole team and their families in making the decision to remove coach. It seemed to be a unilateral and one-sided decision. One or two families' agenda was heard without the balance of the other players. This is very upsetting, especially as we teach our children about following proper protocol in difficult situations. It really looks like the loudest person wins with the balance of other input and perspectives, without the balance of other input and perspectives. The unfortunate thing about the side drama was that it overshadowed a kind, caring, and supportive coach. Coach has always had the best construction on her approach to coaching and wants to build better volleyball players, student athletes, and women. It would be a shame to see coach unable to reach her full potential. She has the right heart for the game and the girls. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Joseph Grantham from DHS Volleyball, wants to speak to us about DHS volleyball changes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? I really kind of got to go off script here too, because in reality, I agree a lot with what the Best family had provided to you. I believe there is not sufficient data to make the decision that was made. I don't believe that everyone was consulted. Again, the minority here seemed to rule this whole process, and I think that that's pretty sad. My daughter was also a captain on this team, and had a lot of struggles with some parental involvement and manipulation, and made it a miserable season for the girls. Ultimately, that interaction divided the team and destroyed what could have been a beautiful coaching career from somebody that cared, someone that loved the sport and loved the girls that she was coaching. She was fair, and she was a good person, the exact kind of person that I want coaching my kids. I myself, I'm an executive board member in Dearborn baseball, and I understand the importance of every child. And I understand that you can't always make everybody happy as well. The biggest thing... The biggest thing that was lacking here is accountability, not by the coach, but by the parents. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Ms. Diane Phillips that wants to speak to the board about the volleyball coach dismissal at Dearborn High School.
I'd like to thank you for having this opportunity to speak to you about the situation that took place this past fall. I am Diane H. Phillips. I taught for the district for 23 years and was the head volleyball coach for the program for 30 seasons. You've heard two sides of the story. I've heard quite a bit as well. What I can tell you is that the volleyball program at Dearborn High School has a legacy of excellence that goes from before my time. My job for the 30 seasons was to continue that legacy. My hope had been in bringing somebody into the program that I knew was passionate about the game and also would learn on the job, and I recognized that it was going to be a very tough season this fall because of the changes that were being made. Not easy to come behind somebody who's been in a program for 30 years, and yet I supported her entirely all the way through. I believe part of what took place this past fall in the dismissal of the coach was a misuse of power by an administrator to appease the desires of a small number of unhappy parents. That resulted in the dismissal of a first-year coach who's the product of Dearborn's school system as well as the Dearborn volleyball program. Her dismissal was done with zero due process, as I understand it, and was done in an ugly and unprofessional way. Did she make mistakes during the season? Absolutely. The first two years that I coached the game of volleyball, hmm, it was bad. And if they had cut me loose after the first two years, I wouldn't be here now because I would not have been in Dearborn and I would not have been coaching volleyball. Nonetheless, my volleyball career has spanned over 40 years, at the high school, middle school, club, and collegiate level. I ask you, if you're an employee, employer, employer, let's put it in the teaching venue, you have a first-year teacher who makes mistakes. Do you fire that teacher after one year? Probably not. I certainly hope not. If that person has done nothing illegal, immoral, or unethical, do you remove them from that position? I wouldn't think so. In fact, making mistakes is how we learn. It's how we grow and become a better person down the road. My concern at this point now, however, is the damage that's been done to the program. I don't know that that will be overcome. The vast majority of the athletes in this program and their families were never included in the evaluation of the coach in the postseason. Not only are her dreams of teaching and coaching volleyball at Dearborn High School been severely hampered, altered, crushed, the athletes in the program have great concerns about what is in the future for them and their volleyball aspirations. I'm deeply hurt by the process that went down with this. The majority of the athletes and their parents have been treated very poorly during this time through a lack of discussion and a total lack of due process. Couple of families were hurt. There was never any effort to discuss the situation with any of the other parents. There were a number of, this was supposed to have been taken care of before the Christmas break, that was the intention, but the parents who were trying to be heard kept getting stonewalled each step along the way. If there was bullying that went on during the season, more of that bullying was coming from parents than it was from the athletes. Were there problems within the team? Certainly there were. Five years ago, the volleyball program had, at Dearborn High, had a really tough season. I had a tough season. The kids had a tough season. It didn't go well. At that point, an administrator from central office made an effort to try and have me fired. I was fortunate enough to have a principal that recognized that what I had done with the athletes and the program over the course of time should not be thrown to the side of the curb, and I continued on beyond that point. I knew that it was time for someone to step in and continue the legacy of the program. I don't know that that will happen now. It is a shame because it is a program that has had great excellence, not just in the gym, but also in the classroom. The Dearborn High volleyball program has been an all-state academic team for every year that the organization, Coaches Association, has made that award. And a lot of that has to also do to the coach who's responsible for the team. I thank you for listening, and I don't know where this is going to go from here. I certainly hope, more than anything, that the volleyball program at Dearborn High can mend, come back together again, and continue the legacy that it has had for well over 40 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick comment. Coach, thank you for your service on and off the court. We appreciate you.
I appreciate everybody who came and gave input. I can't comment on, we don't comment on individual, specific personnel decisions in the public, but what I can comment on is just some clarifications of the process that goes in for all of our coaches. So, the contract with the teachers' union is what dictates how coaches are assigned and receive positions, and so we follow that contract. It is much different than a full-time employee. The rules that govern it state that each year it's posted, so there's actually no guarantee. There's no multiple-year contracts or anything. Basically, what happens is it's every year, it's reposted for everyone. It has to start with the teachers' union, and we can only go outside of the teachers' union if there's no teachers from within the building or within the district that post on it. Now, we obviously are looking for coaches within the community, so I just wanted to clarify that. The building principal, basically where the contract is dictated, the building principal, and I've been a building principal for many years, has the discretion as to determine who they assign in those postings. And so that's what governs it. There's no multiple-year. Now, obviously, if someone's doing an excellent job, you would go over and potentially have them for multiple years, but there's no guarantee, and that's written in the contract. So, it's not that someone can necessarily get terminated because they're not guaranteed multiple-year positions, just to kind of mention that. And the last thing I'll just say is that for many years, just like in the teachers in the classroom, we've worked hard to have effective evaluations in process, and so I could tell you, Mr. Mashur and the athletic directors have worked on instituting an evaluation process, and so that's what we want, is fairness and transparency and allowing process for the coaches. So, the decisions that go on are not based on popularity. Obviously, we take into consideration feedback, but there's actually a rubric with professional standards. Now, we'll admit that we're in the process of implementing those because there really hadn't been a evaluation rubric for many years, and again, that was the same with other sectors of employees, including non-instructional. I know this board had taken on the role of asking then-superintendent Wiston to implement evaluations for all employees. So, I just wanted to clarify a few things there, that that's how the process works, and it's the teacher's contract that dictates the positions that are implemented each year and that the principal makes the decision on those choices.
Thank you.
I just want to make it clear, I know we were thanked in a comment as though we're the ones that made this decision, and I want to make it very clear that any decision that's made in a building, like a coaching decision, whether a coach is going to stay or not stay, is not something that came in front of the board, and that was not something that we had or would have an opportunity to vote on. That is completely administrative, and that was not a decision any of us here made. And I think it's clear to, I think it's important to make that clear, is that we did not do this investigation, we did not vote on this decision.
But what we do is ensure that the process is being followed.
Right.
That's our role in these types of situations, but I thank everybody for coming forward, and we heard you all. Thank you. Next, please.
Next is approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting, executive session, policy training, January 10, 2019, board report 1888, organizational P-12 meeting, January 14, 2019, board report 1889, and regular P-12 meeting, January 14, 2019, board report 1890. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
Do I hear any corrections or additions? Yes, Trustee Lane. Not a surprise.
As usual. For the regular P-12 meeting, on page 18 to 19, I'd like to clarify that a little bit. President Reagan declared MLK Day a national holiday in, I think, I want to say 1988 or thereabouts, but the Dearborn District adopted it somewhere in the, I don't, I didn't take the time to try to research this because it would have taken me too much time, but in the 2000, early 2000s. So, we adopted it as a holiday, but it had already been a national holiday, and I just want to clarify that.
Oh, yes, absolutely. You are correct.
Yeah. One other question that I had on the executive session meeting minutes, I was really happy to see those, to refresh myself on all the motions and all of that stuff, but when I tried to save those to my folder, are those encoded or something? It's not a PDF that you can easily...
No, but I can send you a PDF.
Okay, because...
Because you have to copy them.
Right, 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 and I was trying to, I had crashed my laptop, so I had a really hard time trying to copy them and...
Yeah, I was trying to copy them too, and I wasn't able to. I'll send them to the board as a PDF.
Okay.
You can't copy the files.
Yeah, that's what I found out. You can't copy it first.
Safety first.
Well, I mean, yeah, it's, we maintain that copy, so a PDF should be sufficient. I don't know how it was encoded, but anyways, thank you.
All right, hearing a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Can we attach a unanimous roll, please?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item, we have special reports, Playworks by Dr. Glenn Maleko and Ms. Amy Mark.
So, we'll call her and her team, and we appreciate the patience, and we've had some students here.
Who really need to get home and get to bed. We appreciate your sticking it out.
We're going to actually do it a little backwards so they can get home and get to bed. Okay, so we were going to, we're going to have them introduce themselves. These are our junior coaches, which I will explain a little bit more about, but they're the children who help us be our leaders at recess, and they're going to introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about Playworks, which we were going to do at the end, but we're now going to do at the beginning, and then they're going to ask for some volunteers, okay?
And people.
Can you stand right there? You ready?
Hi, my name is Lemia, and it's, this is how Playworks changed my school, McDonald Elementary. The first thing is it taught us new games and it made other kids play fair.
Hi, my name is Mehdi. Being a junior coach has made me a leader, and I get to help the younger kids at school. I like helping make teams work together.
Hi, my name is... Hi, my name is Ali, and my favorite part of Playworks is everyone is included and we all get to play games together and have fun, and our supervisors make sure that we're safe.
Hi, my name is Aneem, and I will introduce you to the game Switch. So, basically, there are five cones, and each person is at a cone. The person in the middle cone pulls a switch and says, "Switch." Then, everyone scrambles around and finds another cone to go to. If you and another person end up in the same cone, you do rock, paper, scissors. If you lost, then everyone says, "Good job, nice try," and you go to the end of the line.
So, we are going to ask for two volunteers, if there's any who'd like to volunteer to play with us, so we can do, it's a quick game.
Joanne wants to go in gym. I volunteer for you.
They were voluntold. All right, so we are going to, you guys can get in your places. So, this is one of our favorite games at McDonald called Switch, and why we like it is because anywhere from pre-k to five can play it all together at once. So, we're going to have our line be over here. Who's in line, okay? Who's in my middle? Are you in my middle? Okay, and then if, Trustee Thorpe, you can stand right there. So, she is going to put her arm in the air, and when she pulls it down, she's going to yell, "Switch," and the goal is to get to another cone without being in the middle, okay? If you are the last person standing, we're going to say, "Good job, nice try," and you're going to go into the line, and then the next person's going to come in. Do we understand? Thumbs up if you understand. All right, go ahead. So, they got there at the same time. So, at McDonald and with Playworks, what we do is we do rock, paper, scissors. We call it Rochambeau, and then whoever, there's a little pressure, whoever wins stays, and whoever doesn't, we say, "Good job, nice try," and you go to the line. And do it one more time? Keep going. All right, so paper covers rock, so yep, good job, nice try. All right, and then you go into the middle, and we're going to play one more just so we can get the gist of it. Okay, go ahead.
Boy, gym's competitive.
I'm not losing.
All right, thank you, junior coaches. High five, and you guys can cut off. High five, good job. Where's my headset?
I think you should come back every board meeting.
There's about 400 games, so we could definitely teach you one every board meeting. I brought with me Teresa Blasco, she is my PE teacher, and she's just going to help answer questions, but we're just going to kind of take you through the slides, and then if you have any questions along the way, just holler. We, Playworks started at McDonald actually about two and a half years ago when my staff got trained, and then last year, we introduced the coach program to our students and our staff, and so Playworks has been with Dearborn Schools right now from 2017 to current. Last year, we were the only school who had Playworks at McDonald, and this year, eight more joined us. Just to give you an overall of Playworks, Playworks is a national nonprofit organization that is helping transform children's physical and emotional health. They promote inclusion of every student in play, teamwork, and problem-solving skills that then follow into the classroom. What it does for our students is it helps them feel included, it allows students to be more active, it gives them leadership roles, such as our junior coaches who just left, who come out every recess. We have 15 of them, and they alternate days, and they actually lead our activities with our K through, fifth graders through recess. It also encourages teamwork, sportsmanship, and then that also all goes into the classroom too, and as Teresa's going to explain a little bit, how it actually goes into PE, and then it goes into music and art and all of our special areas. Playworks' goal is to provide like tier-one support for 100% of our students, to build all their schools, and they do that by encouraging students to have positive conversations, to make sure that we're not saying we're out, we're saying a good job, nice try, or hey, you can come in, I've been in for a while. We do that a lot with four-square. If there's been four kids who have kind of dominated the four-square court, they'll say, "Hey, we're good," and they all go out and come back in. So, it's making sure everybody has a turn too, and just giving them those skills that they need to be successful inside and outside. It also is, has decreased our bullying outside on the playground and inside in the classroom, and it gives students an ownership of their recess activities in order to choose where they'd like to go, and then they also have the choice of free play every recess, and it also gives, it has shown... And it also gives, it has shown in our students that a lot of them now make up games that they never have done before that are outside of the Playworks. They'll say, "Hey, we can turn this game into something else." So, using their imagination a little bit more too. Playworks, I just, I was going to share some survey results with you. Just, last year, I'm going to share the McDonald ones with you. The Michigan ones are there too, but the ones that affect us. 23 of our staff members, which is just about everybody, took a survey. And this is, of course, one year's worth of data. Next year, they'll be able to provide all nine schools for Dearborn. 100% of the staff agreed that this is improving our overall culture and climate in our school with our students and parents. They, they stated that 16 hours of instruction time was saved due to the amount of time saved from transitions from recess to the school year. 84% of them said there was fewer bullying incidents. 75% of them said fewer verbal and physical conflicts because we're giving them tools to make sure that they know how to solve them. And 94% of them said there's, they were better focused inside and outside of the classroom. I'm going to have Teresa talk a little bit about what she's seen in the last two years at McDonald within the gym and within some of the sporting activities we do.
I got to tell you, folks, I love Playworks, and I am a person who likes kids to play. What we found out with Playworks is it works in the gym. It works everywhere you go, and it works because it gives kids the skills, and they are able to talk to each other and decide on the rules, and then everybody plays by them. In the gym, I do a lot of Playworks games because they transfer, and then the kids come in and tell me about games, and I can use them, the same games in the curriculum. So, the PE curriculum melts right into that, and the kids, there's less arguing because they do rock, scissors, paper. They understand that it's a waste of time to stand there and go, "No, not me. Yes, you." They just do rock, scissors, paper, and they play the game. They don't keep score. Keeping score is a waste of time. If you have fun, you're won, and that's what Playworks is all about. I'm not sure if you have any questions, if I can answer them.
I have one question. Your junior coaches did a great job, and I was wondering how they're selected.
Oh, I can, I can answer that. Yeah, that's fine. We actually have them fill out a job application. So, everybody is allowed to submit their job application, and then from there, we look at the job applications and we take teacher recommendations. There are 15 selected every year. We make sure they're a different 15 than the year before. And what we did this year is if there's somebody out, we use the junior coaches from last year that are still there because it's fourth and fifth graders. We use them as our subs, kind of, so they're not completely out of it when, our fourth graders that become fifth grader are not completely out of it. And teacher recommendations are a couple of different ways. One, they're just a rock star of a child, and this would be the perfect job for them. Another one is, is the child, some of them, we, we really think they need to be involved, and this is the one thing they picked, and it's going to make them shine. So, we also pick those students that we think will make shine. So, it's a combination of both kinds of students.
I don't have a question. I, I'm trying to work it through in my head, what it is. But I would like to say that I think we need to be doing as much PE as we can reasonably put in. I see a couple of retired PE teachers. And the importance of play to kids is, should not be underestimated. I think it's very important. In our rush as a society to test children, we've pushed, pushed out a lot of creative things like music and art, and I mean that as America broadly, not Dearborn District. Dearborn has tried to retain, and I know Dr. Maleko has, has told teachers that they can have recess. They don't have to deprive kids of recess. And I think almost all of the studies that we're reading academically show us that taking a break for play and for physical activity reinforces learning. It speeds up learning. It has almost all positive benefits. So, I only think that adults don't play enough, so. Well, yeah, maybe Trustee Thorpe accepted.
Moving along with, with what Trustee Lane said, something that you, you actually said was imagination. They use their imagination, and I don't know that kids get to use that as much. But even us as adults, I'm sure I'm not the only person that occasionally at work gets a little bit tired and needs to get up and walk around a little bit. So, we can't expect that these students are going to be able to sit for hours at a time, especially once we get into testing season.
I got a question and a comment. My question is, are your students as competitive as Trustee Thorpe?
At Foursquare, yes. That is our new game, and yes, they are very competitive at Foursquare.
You know, I'm looking at some of the social learning here. Fast forward, you're working with elementary students. Fast forward, I work with middle schoolers and high schoolers. Those are the same things we teach, so that's awesome. It's unbelievable.
It gives, it just, it gives us time to incorporate the way they learn and see a different side of kids that we don't always see. And now, we're seeing that our kindergartners that had this last year for the first year, this is just their way of life. They know any, know, and they don't know any different. So, I think in the next couple of years, we're going to see major improvements, even more than we've already seen, because it's just going to be the way it's always been. And I have first graders that can lead chants, just like our fourth and fifth grade junior coaches. And they're like, "Because I'm going to do that when I'm that age." So, it's something to look forward to, too.
I also picked up on the confidence of you junior coaches. That's your future captains for the volleyball teams and the football teams. So, God bless. Thank you. Good work.
One question, and you might not be able to answer this.
Okay.
Do you get any feedback that these students are doing this in the neighborhoods after school as well, now that they've learned some of these games and skill sets?
Absolutely. After, after school, our playground is used a lot on weekends and after school. And the best prize they can get from our school right now is a Foursquare ball. But the nicest thing is they're, they're taking it, their parents, we had a Playworks night last year, so their parents could see what was going on, and they came and played games. So, we're hearing parents as saying, "They just want to go. They want to, they want to play games. They want to play scramble. They want to play switch." And making sure that they are, we're giving them the equipment to do that. A lot of these games don't inquire any equipment. But yes, it's coming onto the playgrounds after school too.
And, and that's really, I've been working with healthy Dearborn in the past, and Playworks was one of the things we discussed before I found out that you had gotten your grant. And I came back all excited to my group to let them know about it. But that being said, one of the things that we're always trying to find, and that's challenging, is to get these kids out of the house and doing something. And a lot of them don't have those opportunities or resources. So, something like this that expands their ability to have these kinds of healthy activities after school as well, something easily accessible, easily learned, and to be able to play in a manner that's respectful of each other. I don't see how you can lose with this.
Another component of Playworks is also their jamborees, which they hold three times a year. There is flag football. There's girls' basketball that just took place at River Oaks on Saturday. And there is wiffle ball, which will take place in the spring. And this is a time for teams of students, and they're all invited to practice and then come together with area schools. Dearborn, Ferndale's involved. There's a lot of other surrounding school areas, and they just get to play for fun. And our, our students have been part of it for a year now. At River Oaks, there were 70 children there on Saturday playing three-line basketball, and it was an amazing thing to see. They all got a Playworks T-shirt. They did chants together, and that gives them, like, something outside of school too, to look forward to. And what I am hoping to see is our future basketball players and things kids wouldn't have seen before, they're going to now try in middle school because they were given the chance in elementary school. And then, the last thing we did, it just, and Playworks helped, and so did the Green School as our alternative to our parade, is we did playground beautification at our school. And we actually painted our school. We painted Foursquare courts. We have a circle in the middle that we play games and that we are going to continue. We have to finish painting it. We ran out of paint. But our teachers, our staff, and Playworks staff, and our children all helped do that. So, that was another bonus to having that Playworks because it really took us a step farther on making sure that our playground was ready to play with during the weekends too.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.